Good evening, welcome to the Falls Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Monday, December 7. We'll begin with a salute to the flag. To the flag.
United States of America into the republic of Wiccanistan.
One nation.
One mission.
Under God.
Under God. And the liberty and justice for all.
All right, tonight we have a special meeting before us. North Point Development is acquiring and purchasing the US Steel site later this month.
Mr. Dent, you want me to, you want me to take attendance or?
Yeah, I'm sorry, you can go ahead and take attendance.
Okay, Mr. Galloway.
Here.
Mr. Vrasky.
Here.
Mr. Dent.
Yes.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
I'm a yes. Here.
As I was saying, they're acquiring the US Steel site and purchasing later this month. So to accommodate them before settlement, we tried to squeeze them in tonight. We're going to hear their, see their plan, we're going to hear from them. The developer's agreement is probably still a work in progress. So we're probably not going to be taking action on that tonight. Same with the Marsville Municipal Authority Agreement. There's still some things that have to be worked out. We've run a very short timeline, but we are going to hear from the applicant. We will take public comment. So Mr. Clark, can you lead us into this?
Sure, Mr. Dent, as you indicated, this special meeting has been duly advertised for the consideration of a sketch plan presentation of NP Falls Township Industrial, also known as North Point, regarding proposed development of certain tracks or parcels of ground situated in Falls Township consisting of approximately 1,846.4 acres. The tax map parcel numbers have been listed in the advertisement. And as you indicated, this is more commonly known as the, the US Steel site. Also listed on the agenda tonight for consideration is of a master plan approval agreement related to the properties and consideration of a resolution recognizing the Marsville Municipal Authority as the owner and operator of the United States Steel Corporation potable water, raw water, industrial water, and sanitary sewer facilities. But as you indicated, since we are continuing to work with North Point's attorneys and we are continuing to have discussions with Marsville Municipal Authority, we're going to ask that both of those matters be, be pushed to possibly next Monday. And what we would ask is that the board at the end of the presentation from North Point consider recessing the meeting until next Monday, December 14th at 5:00 PM for consideration of the master plan agreement and the Marsville Municipal Authority Agreement. One thing before I turn it over to North Point's counsel, the board did hold an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss some personnel matters and also to consult with its advisors regarding a matter that is coming before the board. North Point is represented by Michael McGinnis Esquire and Alan Toadvine Esquire of the law firm, law firm of Begley, Carlin, and Mandio. And if they can be led into the meeting, I will allow them to introduce the project and their clients and then turn it over for the sketch plan presentation.
Can you repeat exactly who you would like in the meeting right now?
Mike McGinnis and Alan Toadvine.
Mike, real quick, so there's no public comment, there was only public comment on this agenda item. So whoever's in public comment will have to wait?
We, since this is the only agenda item, yeah, we'll, we'll take the, the public comment. And since this is a special meeting, we'll just be taking a public comment on this agenda item.
Thank you.
And even though there will not be any formal action after the sketch plan, this is more the applicant wants to present this to you, wants you to see what it is that they are proposing. Get your questions, hear your comments, hear any concerns. And then I think they would probably like it if the board, sort of each individual board member indicated whether or not they liked the proposal, but there is no official vote taken on this sketch plan. And I've seen Mr. McGinnis is in and again, I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. And we also, I think, have in the waiting room Jed Momo and Greg Glitzer. Jed's on behalf of North Point and Greg is with us from Gilmore and Associates, who's the project engineer. Alan is, is with me, but is not, does not have a separate screen. So as stated, Mike McGinnis with Begley Carlin here tonight on behalf of North Point Development for the United States Steel Site to discuss our master site sketch plan. As the township, I'm sure, is aware, and as was stated by Mr. Dent at the beginning, North Point is the equitable owner of the property with a closing date scheduled later this month. I do want to state as a preliminary item, and this is quite sincere, that North Point cannot be more pleased with their interactions to date with the township. We've had very positive support really throughout the entire community, but all of our interactions with the township and Mr. Clark's office and Mr. Jones have been very, very positive and Mr. Tekeeta. And I know that that is a point that will be reiterated by Jed tonight. And I think it's worthwhile to address this upfront because as you'll see, it is not North Point's intention to acquire the property, secure entitlements, and then flip the property to different owners. They are here for the long haul, they want to be partners with the township. They are buying this property to own the property. So they truly value the relationship that has been built with the township and they look forward to that continuing moving forward. Rather than going through any specific comments and review letters like we normally would, as Mr. Clark indicated, we are here for a sketch plan conversation and presentation. The, the board is exceedingly familiar with this particular site. So we're not going to be getting into background regarding the site. We just really want to present North Point's overall vision and broad development plan. We believe that our detailed sketch plan narrative that Mr. Glitzer prepared addresses our overall vision for the site. But you'll note that we've indicated broadly speaking, our intention to develop approximately 8,117,000 square feet with a potential maximum build out of around 15 million square feet here. This will be comprised primarily of industrial warehousing space. And we do want to move quickly. So while this is again, a master site sketch plan discussion, it is our intention, you know, to actually submit a phase one land development submission. And again, this is something that Jed is going to cover with the board tonight, but perhaps even later this month. So this is going to be a project where the supervisors are going to see us for many years moving forward. So this is just the first stage of what we are excited to present for this project. Personally, I know how critical a site this is for the township and the history of this site and the jobs that it created, and really how important this is for the region as a whole. So given the uniqueness, I'm excited to state that in dealing with North Point and having conversations with the North Point team, I truly believe that North Point is uniquely positioned to develop this site in a way that the site and the township really deserves. We think this project is going to be one of the largest and most successful projects in the region really over the next decade, and we're excited to get going. Saying all that, I stated this to the planning commission, but I'll repeat it tonight. I could go on for a long time about this project and what the township is really going to look forward to moving forward, but I don't think the township really wants to be hearing from me about this. And I found that North Point is much better at explaining who they are and their vision than I am. So I'm going to turn the floor over to Jed for North Point. He's going to walk the supervisors through a PowerPoint project that they've put together. And Greg Glitzer, like I said, is with us from Gilmore and Associates in case there's any technical questions. But I'm going to cede the floor to Jed and he's going to get into who North Point is, why they're acquiring the site and their visions for this site moving forward. I think Jed's in the room now. Jed, are you, I think you're muted Jed.
Okay, how about that? Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. Well, well, thank you for having me, Mike. Thank you for the quick introduction. I just want to make sure that everybody can see my screen, okay? Okay, perfect. Well, well, thank you for letting us present our project. We are, you know, thrilled to be, you know, having the ability to show you what our vision is. We're going to talk a little bit about the project, who North Point is, who we are, what, what we do. And, you know, kind of the next, the next phase and the next few years of what this project will unfold. So my name is Jed Momo, I office in St. Louis for North Point Development. I'm our chief strategy officer and really my job is to, you know, create kind of the early stages of projects similar to this and put them into, into production and really get the development laid out for our, our development team to come and execute on the project. So we have somewhat renamed the KIPC. We plan to call this project Keystone Trade Center. You'll see from our images and future slides what that means and, and what the genesis behind that name is. But tonight we're showing you master sketch plan and, and really what our vision is for the overall development. So a little bit about North Point first and who we are, what we do. We are an industrial developer and we are based out of the Midwest. Our home office is in Kansas City. We have offices in St. Louis, Cincinnati, Sacramento, Detroit, Salt Lake, Seattle, as well as a small office in Harrisburg, actually. Market presence, we are really a coast to coast firm. We have active footprint in 23 states and, you know, close to 30 different unique industrial markets. Over the last five years, we've been the largest and most, most active industrial developer in the United States. What that means is that we've developed more square feet over the last five years on an annualized basis than any other. A portfolio of almost 80 million feet now. We currently construct about 20 million feet a year. Total construction per year. And, you know, since our inception about eight years ago, almost nine years ago now, we've put about $7 billion to work in our various developments. Something that we're really proud about is the job creation that kind of comes with a lot of our projects. We have created now close to 60,000 jobs based on our, our development, both speculative and build to suits for clients. At the bottom of this slide, you'll see many of our industrial clients. These are the folks that we work with day in, day out. General Motors, Chewy, Adidas, Walmart, Amazon, Lowe's. We work with these folks every day of the week. And this year alone, we'll probably do five or six unique projects with Amazon. We've got several projects that we're doing right now with Walmart, including in, in the state of Pennsylvania and many other customers that you see on this list such as General Motors, Ford, FedEx, ABF Freight, Patagonia is also in one of our projects in Pennsylvania. So many of these clients who we show on the bottom of the slide, we would expect to occupy at this park. Who, who we are, you know, really we are a turnkey developer. We have in-house expertise and we really pride ourselves on doing it all ourself. And what that means is we have civil engineers on staff. I'm a civil engineer. We have around 10 other civil engineers that encompass kind of in-house services. We do partner with local civil engineering firms. Gilmore Associates and Greg Glitzer, who's on the, the Zoom call is our local partner to help us navigate and finalize the engineering in, in, in this market and on this project. We do have in-house architecture. We are licensed in Pennsylvania, so all of our plans will be stamped by Studio North. That's our in-house architects. We have logistics services, labor services, property management. We do all ourself. We do all of our own site selection and in-house legal team as well as data and analytics for our customers. So all that means is, you know, really soup to nuts, whether it be the development aspect or trying to bring in the next Amazon, Walmart, Home Depot into this site. This is where we can really be a value add for our customers and where we can be the, you know, the experts in industrial development, industrial warehousing to attract, to attract folks like that to the Keystone Trade Center. So a little bit about the property, I'm sure you're all very familiar with the Keystone Industrial Pork Complex. This property dates back to 1950s, early 1950s where US Steel opened the Mon Valley Works Site in its heyday and employed, you know, upwards of 5,000 people. US Steel closed down the majority of the steel plant in the, in the early 2000s. And in, in the late 2000s, they renamed the site, the Keystone Industrial Pork Complex and started to do some, you know, heavy industrial redevelopment since then. In the late 90s, this site was put into the RICRA program, RCRA, which is a program by the US EPA. So it is a, what we would tag a brownfield, meaning it is a site that has environmental issues. It has a, again, a consent order that has been issued by the United States EPA and it requires some level of cleanup in order for it to be put back into productive reuse. So I'll talk a little bit about that later. As you can see from this slide, many of the tenants who are on, on this slide are still there today. Dominion Energy, Kinder Morgan, CSC, Covanta, Gamaesa. Many of you I'm sure are familiar with those businesses. Those businesses also occupy the KIPC. And by us purchasing the property, we will become their landlord and work with them for the redevelopment plan. The development overview, this really just kind of lines out what we see as the, the next steps and the benefits of this development. So this site, as I mentioned, is a brownfield. North Point has a lot of brownfield experience. This is what we do. We do many of these types of sites across the United States. And I'll touch on that a little bit later. We've hired a local team, a very strong local team. Mike and Greg obviously are on this Zoom call, but we've got many other consultants, whether it be traffic, civil engineering, biology, habitat, wetland, environmental planning and architecture. We've got a great local team that's helping us navigate through this project. At 1,800 acres, this site is, is going to be one of the largest projects on the, on the East Coast and certainly on the I-95 corridor. We see that, you know, this project's proximity to population, it's going to be a real driver in industrial demand going forward. We mentioned the initial project phasing and scale is going to be close to 10 million square feet. That's going to be a $1 billion investment by North Point and our partners. That includes remediation of the site. It includes redevelopment, demolition, cleanup of the property, you know, from its state that it sits in today, you know, into a bustling Class A state of the art business park. The property is big. It's going to allow large scale buildings to be constructed, which is where we see the market. Today's industrial market is, is 1 million square foot buildings and bigger. We're, we're actually doing buildings close to 2 million feet in this state. And they continue to get bigger and bigger. And that is really what tenants are requiring in a lot of their, their footprint. The growth of the development, there's, there's enough land that the development could grow upwards of 15 million feet. It could grow, you know, greater than a billion and a half dollar investment over time as we're able to redevelop some of the parts of the site. As Mike mentioned, we have a very aggressive timeline. We'll be back in for subsequent approvals very quickly. We plan to start phase one immediately, spring of next year. And we plan to be one phase ahead. When I say phase, it's typically one building ahead so we can meet customer timelines. North Point will, will develop the majority of this park on a speculative basis, meanings that we'll go build the building without a tenant in mind. We'll spend the capital to build the empty building because we know the market is there and we know the demand is there. And then last but not least, we see the job potential at the property is, is 5,000 jobs at a minimum, could be up to, up to 10,000 jobs if we can really, if we can really hit the mark and grow the park upwards of 15 million feet over time. So a huge job creator for the community. We see that as obviously the greatest benefit for the community. And, you know, real excited to, to kickstart this development. So this is, I mentioned, a regional project. Obviously affects the township, affects the county. But we see this project is going to be a regional decision for occupiers. So when Amazon, when Walmart, when a Fortune 100 company looks to locate in the Northeast, especially with a building that's a million foot or greater, they're looking to the regional impact that it has. Why is this site good for that? First of all, it, within a one day truck drive, we can reach 40% of the United States population. Within a three hour drive, we can reach 34 million people, which is a lot of people. And the I-95 corridor, as you've seen over the past few years, and especially over the past year, has, has, has really taken off for industrial development. Its proximity to the coastal ports is excellent and the site logistics, it's got rail, it has port, it has the heavy built roadways internal, and it's really a great conduit for industrial development. So quickly touch on the access to the site. This site has access really from multiple points. You know, the, the idea is to get out to, to 295, the Turnpike or I-95. And we can do that really through Tyburn Road. That's really how trucks, tractor trailers and semi trucks will come in and out of the property. We'll use a designated truck route, Tyburn Road. There's also access through Pennsylvania Avenue. I think that'll be primarily employee access in and out. And then as you can see, eastern, western routes, either utilizing Highway 1 and 13 Bristol Pike and/or going across the river and hitting 295. So multiple access points, again, the, the infrastructure is set up well for what we are wanting to do here. And we've had a lot of great response from tenants who look at access in and out of these developments and have given the thumbs up on it. So diving into some of the, the sheets that you've all received for the master sketch plan. So slide eight, this is really a parcel map. As you'll note, there are a few of these parcels that are blued out and hatched. These are parcels that have been previously sold by US Steel, so we will not be acquiring these. These include Gamaesa, include Roebling Mortgage, Air Gas, as well as the US Steel Galvanizing Plant. There was a subdivision that was approved a few weeks ago and US Steel will retain their galvanizing operation and remain on the property. Next slide, we'll take a second to load. It is really the existing condition slide shows the existing buildings and features on the property. And then the following slide is the same, but shows the buildings. I'm actually going to flip to the next, which shows the future development plan. So while that loads, I'll explain a little bit about what we build. So I mentioned in earlier, we built Class A modern industrial park. So what does that mean? It is a concrete tilt up building. Typically the clear height are at least 40 foot clear, somewhere between 36 and 40 foot in clear height. We will do this on a speculative basis, meaning we'll build the building without the tenant, but we'll also do build to suits specific for users. So a user may come to us and we will see a lot of this. A user will come to us saying, we need our building to look like this or function like this. And we will do a custom fit building for that user. We do a lot of those for Amazon, a lot of those for Walmart where they have unique requirements. A lot of landscaping goes into these type of developments. We'll do new greenways and green belts, new sidewalks, freshly paved roads. We'll relocate a lot of the existing roadways. We'll upgrade and update the utilities that are here. And really the whole business park will be freshened up. And over time, as we are able to redevelop some of the old buildings, we'll tear those down. We'll build new buildings and a lot of those tenants may have an opportunity to relocate into a new building. And, and, and over the years, we'll revitalize and transform, you know, what's there today. And, and, and over the years, we'll revitalize and transform, you know, what's there today. Just a three D rendering of what the park may look like at a full fifteen million, I think, close to fourteen million foot build out. Again, the initial phase is upwards of a billion dollars. As the park can grow over time, you know, we see job creation somewhere between five and ten thousand jobs. It could be a billion and a half in investment. A few examples of the exterior of our buildings. So this is concrete tilt wall exterior. We do a lot of different color schemes, different etchings and, and undulation in the building to break it up. These are big buildings, so we try hard to make them look as good as we can. We do a lot of corner storefronts where the offices are located. So all of these are real examples of projects that we've built throughout the US. Couple of examples of project interior offices. So each of the tenants will have a tenant improvement allowance. So if the, if the tenant is forty thousand square feet or if they're four hundred thousand square feet, each of them will have an office, likely have, you know, cube working space, break room, bathrooms, maybe a lounge, maybe private offices. They also might have shop offices out in the warehouse for maintenance and or manufacturing. So a number of different office arrangements. These are just a few examples. So touch on the environmental status a little bit. So I mentioned that this site was opened up in the nineteen fifties and US Steel was put into the RICRA program by the EPA. And over the years, US Steel has characterized the site. US Steel has worked on cleaning up portions of the site. They cleaned up about seventy percent. There's about thirty percent of the site remaining to be cleaned up. This is within the DEP, Pennsylvania DEP Act Two Program, as well as the EPA One Cleanup Program for Groundwater. What North Point's going to do is we're going to clean up the rest of the property. And really what's left to clean up is, is really the most expensive part of the cleanup. So we'll invest about twenty-five million dollars, just in environmental remediation to get this site back to a point where, you know, it can be redeveloped. So over the next, I'd say, three to four years, we envision spending that capital, getting the remaining thirty percent of the site cleaned up, cleaning up the barrel pits, remediating the soil, put the protective cap and the measures in place and then getting the, what they call the release of liability from Pennsylvania DEP completed and then redevelopment will occur. So this is a huge step in, in getting the project, you know, really back to, to reuse. And then the last slide, really this is just our, our resume for brownfield type projects. I mentioned this is what we do. We, we do an awful lot of brownfields around the US. Here's, here are, are more than a dozen examples. Three of these are in the state of Pennsylvania. So we've done close to two billion dollars of brownfield redevelopment. In the project in Wilkes-Barre, PA, Hanover Ridge Industrial Center. That was a, a former coal mining operation that was redeveloped. And today in that park, you have Patagonia, Adidas and Chewy dot com. Created close to three thousand jobs, completely changed that, that community and that, and that land. And really was a win-win for the community and for that site. In York, in York, PA, Eden Road Logistics Center. That was the former Harley, Harley Davidson Manufacturing Plant. We purchased the, the Harley plant, redeveloped it. It had federal government history as well with munitions. Redeveloped that and then today, post serial occupies that building. So again, just a couple of success stories here in the state of Pennsylvania. We've done a number of others, as you can see. We purchased sites from ExxonMobil, from Camorres and DuPont, Republic Steel in Chicago, General Motors. We bought several sites from the Racer Trust and we've done this over and over. We do the cleanup. We do the revitalization of the site. And we redevelop for industrial and logistics based projects. Creating, you know, in, in the process over, over eighteen thousand jobs. So really that's, that's it. We just wanted to say that we, we've got the, the history and the capabilities of doing a project like this. It is a bit, a big project even for us, but we're, we're ready, willing and able to, to take it on. So, you know, we were, in, in, in conclusion, we really look forward to partnering with Falls Township. As, as Mike said, we're going to be here for the long haul. We are a, a long-term hold company. We don't, we don't like to sell off our development. We like to keep them for the long haul. We look forward to becoming a member of the community. We look forward to working with, you know, the local, local trades, the local consulting groups, local architects and engineers and coming up with a great project. And then celebrating the outcomes when, when tenants do locate here. We think that tenants will be here soon. We think next year we'll develop buildings. We'll start phase one, maybe even phase two or three. And we think we'll see a lot of tenant demand and a lot of new jobs created in the process. So. Love to answer any questions. Thank you for allowing me the time and we'll answer any questions that any of you might have.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. We'll go with questions or comments from board members. Mr. Rocco, do you have any questions or comments? Mr. Rocco?
Sorry about that. No, the plan looks very impressive. I did just want to understand one thing. Are you calling each building a phase? Somebody heard?
I, I think right now we're calling each building a phase. It may be a, a situation in the future where a phase may include more than one building. But for now, we're, we're kind of saying each phase is a building.
Yeah, it looks like it's about twenty, twenty buildings or?
Approximately, yes. And we expect that to grow over time.
Okay. No, like I said, it's very impressive. Thanks for the presentation. Great presentation as well.
Mr. Palmer, anything?
Yeah, I didn't hear any topics brought up about hazardous materials or waste. Do you have any tenants in mind where something like that will come in to play?
I, I'd say everything on site is pretty well characterized. We know where the, where the boogeymen are at. And part of our, our remediation plan, we've got about twenty-five million dollars there to remediate the site. So any kind of hazardous waste, any kind of constituents that would concern a tenant, obviously would concern DEP. We're going to remove and we'll cap the site. We'll receive a release of liability. So we'll really, you know, do the, do the legwork to make sure that any tenant that looks at this property is, you know, is going to look at it and say, you know, we, we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have any issues occupying here and putting our, our people in this building. So, you know, diligence on the environmental.
I think Mr. Palmer was more inquiring about whether or not there's going to be any projected use where any tenants would be bringing hazardous material on site.
Oh, I see. We don't expect that, you know, our, our users, I mentioned on that, on that first slide are, are really light industrial users. This is a pretty big change from what's out there today. You know, these folks are bringing in product, putting it on, on racks and, you know, e-commerce shipping in and out. We may have some light manufacturing, you know, we work with a lot of the auto industries to do plastic injection molding for dashes. We do a lot with, with General Motors and Ford. So some of their suppliers might want to locate here, but we do not foresee any type of hazardous waste operations and nor would we want, you know, those types of tenants in here going forward.
No, that's all. Thank you so much. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Galloway?
Just that it looks like a remarkable opportunity for our community and look forward to partnering with you to, in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galloway.
Mr. Boraski?
I just have a couple of things. First, I'd like to say it was the, the plan looks amazing. You know, compared to what's down there now and compared to things that other projects we've heard. You know, this is amazing going from, you guys are clearly have driven through here. You see this. Seeing the green, hearing about green belts and, and seeing, you know, seeing grass and, and, and hearing the roads being rebuilt. I mean, it's amazing opportunity for our township to be a part of that. You know, I thank you guys for that too, because I think it's, you know, it'll be nice to, you know, it's just a nice change for a township to go from such a heavy, heavy industrial area to something that's, that's light in use like this, which is predominantly warehouse space. I guess one of my questions really, could you touch more, and when you first started Jed, you talked about kind of becoming a landlord for some people. Could you, if, I don't want to overstep here, but could you just touch on that a little bit on how you guys are gonna, like how that'll play out?
Yeah, sure. So at the time of closing and which is later this month, you know, we'll essentially step into the leases that are there today. You know, many of these are long-term leases. I'll say ranging anywhere between five more years to thirty more years. So we'll really step into those leases that are there. We'll become the landlord. In some cases, and I, I think a lot of this is kind of yet to be worked out, is we see the opportunity to maybe take some of those tenants and relocate them or put them in a new building or, you know, give them a new space in the park and have the chance to redevelop, you know, some of the, some of those older buildings. Some of those buildings are fifty plus years old and, you know, really need a good facelift. So over time, we see opportunities to do that. But in the, you know, in the immediate future, we'll become those folks landlord and we'll need to, you know, fulfill those obligations within those leases.
Right, thanks. And I might just be having trouble reading some of the writing on the drawing and the plans I'm trying to see on my TV as well. But are you guys, is it your intentions if you're going to say a building is a phase? Are you going to be starting closer to Ben Fairless Drive, which they call like one Ben Fairless? I think when you first come in over the bridge, their, their head, US Steel's headquarters was there. Is that your intentions to start off from the front?
You know, I'm going to attempt to draw something on the screen. Let me know if you see this. I just took a, you know, kind of a red box and drew around a portion of the site. I'm assuming you can see me drawing on the screen, but there are three buildings, building one, two and four. And we see all three of those as kind of the early phase of the project, which is, I want to say that is River Road that runs to that side of the property. We'll, we'll, we'll start with building number one as early as possible. We'd love to do that next spring. You know, barring time for permits. And then building two and building four, we see those coming sometime later next year, maybe summer, maybe fall, but shortly thereafter. And then from there, you know, I think we'll just work in a clockwise kind of path around the property over time.
Because these areas now are, are undeveloped, correct? If I'm, if I got my boundaries right here.
Yes, the first three are undeveloped. That, that's really why we chose those as the first phase. Because it was the, you know, the area we could access the first.
I think that's all I have for now. I appreciate it. Again, I mean, you guys, you know, the, I love looking at the renderings, you know, and, and then towards the end of your slides there of the presentation, you know, it's really, really cool to see and, and more so of a comment, this isn't a question, but a comment, I, I kind of can relate this similar to the Navy Yard in Philadelphia, you know, when you drive through there, there's areas that are still, you know, pretty heavy industrial, but part of that has been redeveloped by, I don't know who, but there's areas that look very similar to this. And when you get to them points, it's kind of like, you know, really cool to see that they were able to take this old, you know, industrial area and what was the naval yard and, and, and make it more of a, a light industrial situation with, with the greens and the landscaping and, and, you know, just new and modernized. So, and so I'm pretty excited to see this get started and, you know, someday, you know, an, an end result. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Right. And yeah, just to echo what everyone else said, they are impressive drawings. I've spent eleven years on this board and we've heard every, you know, idea come before us and, you know, with hopes of something going on down there and it's just never come to fruition. So it's, it's very nice to see you guys on board. For those that aren't aware, North Point's been in town since, I believe around June. And they've been meeting with township staff and professionals weekly to learn our, you know, how to go through the process in Falls Township. They, you know, they're very serious. This is a, this isn't just an idea they have. They're making settlement in a couple of weeks. And like you said, you plan on building that first building by April? Are you breaking ground? Is that your plan Jed?
Yeah, we'd love to. I think it, we'll go as fast as, as we can get permits. So we're, we're planning to make a submittal later this month and, you know, we'll be off to the races from there.
Excellent. And then we will take public comment in a couple of minutes. And then this meeting will be recessed until next Monday at five PM where we can go over the developer's agreement. You know, our professionals and everyone still needs a few more days to work out some kinks. And that's going to be the same for the MMA, the municipal agreement for the water authority in Marsville, which should be ready to go on Monday as well. And with that, is there any public comment needed?
Yes, we have Tony.
All right. There, Tony? Tony is muted.
Star six, Tony.
Sorry. Okay. Will any of the land include Biles Island or affect Biles Creek or access to the island?
No.
Okay. On the third drawing, there are little boxes that show up on the Biles Creek area and they appear to be in the water and I don't know what they are. Hello?
You referring to, but Biles Creek is outside of this area completely.
Good enough. You're planning on upgrading the electric. There are many areas in Falls Township that already have issues with the electric going out. Will adding or upgrading electric in your site affect residential customers?
No, it should not.
Okay. And do you have some kind of plan for the traffic increase on South Pennsylvania, which I know you said is residential? And on Tyburn and some of those trucks that are coming off Route one? Some of them try to come down and, and come down Stony Hill and then try to go under the railroad bridge. It's not tall enough for a lot of big trucks. But also that area in there really needs roadwork done and at some point they're going to have to close it to do the roadwork. So how will that?
On Tyburn Road?
Yeah, that, I do the bridge.
Oh, you're talking about Woolston?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Many trucks coming under Woolston. They'd have to go around and back to Tyburn. But yeah, and as for Pennsylvania Avenue, you know, simply Marsville's passing an ordinance restricting truck traffic. The local trucks would solve that problem there. And it would be, you know, nothing but, you know, employees driving down there. So trucks wouldn't be allowed, similar to what we do in Falls Township for trash trucks. You know, they're limited on what roads they can and can't go and they stick to it.
Okay. And well, part of the concern is because like Lincoln Highway and Route one, they're not township roads. So it's not like we can go out there and fix them. It's the state and getting them to fix it is not good.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I had.
All right, thank you. You have any other public comment, Kyle?
No.
All right. And our professionals are all good. We have no other questions from them?
Mr. Dence, I have one more thing if I can, real quick.
Go ahead.
Mr. Clark, just for people that are listening or watching, could, could you just give a brief summary of the things we are working on, what, what a developer's agreement is and what our professionals are going to be doing over the next few business days to get ready for next week?
Certainly. When anyone comes into the township to develop any property, they sign a developers or development agreement with the township. This lays out the responsibilities of the developer, the responsibilities of the township and what we and what we are agreeing to with respect to whether they're developing a convenience store, whether they're just developing warehouse space. Because of the nature of this site, we are attempting to develop a master site agreement. And what this will do is this will apply to all of the proposals that come in front of you over the next several years, whether it's the ones at the end of this month or whether it's one in phase seven or phase eight or three or four years from now. The developer, North Point here, is looking for a little certainty with respect to what the process will hold for them as they go to develop this site. So we're working on what is essentially going to be a master agreement for the entire site. Now, the developer will still have to, each time they propose a new building or a new development, will each have to come in and go through land development. They'll still have to deal with DEP, they'll still have to deal with the Conservation District. They'll have to deal with zoning if there are any zoning issues. But some of the larger issues regarding how we're gonna review plans, whether or not the zoning on the property down there can change, we'll all be taking care of this master agreement. And Mr. McGinnis in his office and my office has been working on this for the last month or so. But it's a, it's a fairly complicated agreement. And every time one of us thinks of something, then the other one thinks of something and we have to keep editing and editing it. And we just need a little, a little bit more time. So that is essentially what we're, what we're working on. But I don't want to give the impression that just this allows them to begin developing the site without any land development. You'll, you'll be seeing these, these gentlemen, I would suspect repeatedly over the next several years as they come in to develop each, each piece of ground.
And thank you, Mr. Clark, appreciate it. I think that's a, you know, a great summary and I, you know, I know for myself, it's, you know, been kind of a lot to take in, especially with the developer's agreement. It's, you know, it's a big project. So, you know, it's nice for the people to help them to understand, you know, what we're, what we're doing daily here.
And the only thing that I would add to that is I think for every, every phase of this project, after we go through the process, we're still going to be entering into the standard agreements that the township circulates for every development project. So we're not, we're not really eliminating any agreements. We're just setting a template for some broader understanding at the beginning of the process. And speaking for North Point, we appreciate the diligence that Mr. Clark's office has undertaken in reviewing that with us and, and the township for considering this and everything else that we've addressed with this project to date.
All right, I think we're good then. And we're gonna recess this meeting until Monday the fourteenth at five PM. Is that correct for everyone?
It works.
All right. Everyone?
That, that is correct, Mr. Dent. And all of the information on how to access the meeting next Monday, because we will be doing it virtually again, will be, will be up on the township website. So anyone who is interested will be able to access it, the meeting by going to the township website and getting all of the login information.
All right, thank you and have a good night.